This conference will now be recorded.
Thanks, Alicia. Oh, Joanne, you want to see who's on?
Still have caller one, two, and three unidentified.
Nancy Hyde, I don't know if I'm one of those.
No, your name is up there. There's, um...
Steve Madar?
No.
Paul Luck?
Dozy O'Neil?
Got everybody.
Got everybody?
Yep.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 5:31. And Michelle, do you want to move forward with the police department report?
Sure. As you can see in the report, it's been a relatively quiet week, although there's been a lot of police interactions. I want to remind everyone, the police are only on duty five days a week now. So when there's a lot of action, it's within that five-day period. Also, there was a question about golf carts. Golf carts are not allowed, or the driving ones. I mean, if you want to drag a regular golf cart, that's fine. But if you're on a golf cart and you're driving it, that's not allowed in the village. And I'd recommend you call the police to see what you can do about that. Because they're not allowed in the village. And I understand one of our residents almost got run over a week or two ago. And it's not legal. Other than that, I don't have anything.
I think Kevin addressed that with someone that was out there riding around the other day. I don't know.
Yeah, he said he's been doing it when he sees it. He does.
Yeah.
But we also have to, everyone in the village, you know, has to be eyes and ears.
Sure.
So...
Does anyone have any questions for Michelle? Is John Farmer or Terry on the phone for the DPW?
No, they're not. I spoke with Terry today. He sent in his report last week. I assume John Farmer did it. So we've gotten their report. He wanted to let you know that the bridge at Washington Island has been fixed. And the only thing left to do is to fix up the guardrail and to replace part of it. And that will be done this week.
Oh, great.
And he'll be back to work. Terry will be back in on Wednesday.
Okay, any questions for Nancy on the DPW? Okay, Megan, you're on.
Okay. The guys have had a busy couple of weeks. On the 29th of June, we did have a successful pigging of our raw water intake at our low lift. So that was a big relief for everyone. But no, we got some pretty cool videos from Hunt Underwater Specialties. And you got to see everything that got scraped out of that line. And it was pretty exciting to finally have that done. But we'll be good for another three to five years. The health department was satisfied. At the wastewater plant, we had some sludge holding tank valves replaced. That was a two-day project. They had been old and really failing over the past couple of years. It takes more than two people to turn them. So that was good to get them switched out for safety and efficiency reasons. My guys have also been helping the DPW with several water main repairs throughout the village. We had New York leak detection come in, and they did find several pretty major leaks throughout the village. I believe three were found, over 20,000 gallons a day. We were losing. So they finally got all them wrapped up. And our water production at the water treatment plant has finally gone down to a more normal rate. So that was a really good day that we finally got that wrapped up. And as far as water project goes, all construction is done with the water treatment plant project. Now it's just adds and then stuff, paperwork, and closing out contracts. And we're getting pretty close. In the next couple of weeks, we should be wrapped up with that water project.
That's good.
Yeah, a lot of good news. That pretty much some of the big highlights for Water Sewer Department. You know, they've been busy doing lots of other things. But that'll be a report for next time. Do you guys have any questions or concerns, water sewer related?
I'm good. I'll help out the rest of you.
Any of the guys going to go to the Water Works Conference? And I think it's in the Bay at Edgewood?
Tentatively, yes, I believe. Because we had them signed up for the conference in April, which was canceled due to the coronavirus. So I believe, from what I heard, their registrations were automatically...
Carried over.
To these ones. I'm going to verify. But depending on what's going on, I don't know that's possible. I don't have high hopes that that conference will be actually held. It may be.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. I think they probably might cancel it, but they haven't yet. So sound disinfecting would be a good one unless they cancel it.
Oh, yeah, I know. But I see a lot of other major conferences, or they're all doing virtual, or they're not happening. So I, just for my guys' safety, if they, depending on what's happening, if they're still choosing to attend it, if any of them are uncomfortable going, you know, I'm going to have them stay put, just to be precautious. I don't think any of them are in immediate need of contact hours. You know, they're always good to have, and you always learn some. But we don't have any license renewals right around the corner. So there's plenty of time to get more hours when they need it.
All right, I'm just curious.
Yep.
Anyone else for Megan? Thanks, Megan. Manasa, you got a question for us on the vault?
Yeah, hi, everybody. It's Manasa with Development Authority. Just wanted to touch base with you on the historic district project. I talked to you, I think, in the last two meetings about a vault on John Street that we were working with Luck Brothers to get a price to install. We also talked to New Century about doing that work. And the reason being is this work is outside the DOT right away, but it is part of the project. And we'd gone back and forth with National Grid, trying to get that vault removed from the project and just do sweeps in the electrical conduits instead. But they haven't backed down. They're requiring that this vault be installed due to the number of sweeps that are required between the main vaults and the buildings. So this is a little bit outside the scope for New Century. It would require, there's a lot of rock underground right there. And New Century is not set up to perform that work. So we did reach out to Luck Brothers, who's doing the work for DOT. And they've provided a quote. Because of the rock and the unknowns of what's underground, their quote is rather high. But what we've proposed, and they've accepted, is to do the work on a time and material basis. So rather than just giving them the highest lump sum of what it potentially could be, we'll just watch the construction as it happens and take note of the amount of equipment, the time, and the materials required. And then they would just get paid for exactly what it is they do for work.
What was their quote, Manasa?
The quote was $64,000. And just to give you guys a heads up, I was a little late sending out last month's monthly report, but I did shoot that out this afternoon. And when you guys take a look at that, you'll see that our contingency currently is sitting at $660,000. So really not an issue with the contingency. There's plenty of contingency to cover it. And it's one of the items that we've known has come in. It's just a matter of trying to get it locked down from the contractor. And he had to reach out and get quotes on some of this stuff from like Jefferson Concrete. So the high estimate, the not to exceed amount, would be $64,000. And we would be doing that at a T and M basis. So he's very, very confident it'll come in below that.
But somebody here want to make the motion to accept that proposal that Manasa just gave us?
I'll make the proposal.
Is that Nancy?
Yes.
Thank you, Nancy. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Steve. On favor? On favor?
Yes, yes.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hey, you'll get back to Luck Brothers, Manasa, and we'll be moving, right?
Yep, yeah, they're ready to get going. They need to order some stuff. So the work probably will take place, my guess is, in the next three weeks. But I'll give them the go-ahead to get the stuff ordered so they can get it on the schedule.
Okay. Thank you, Manasa. Any questions for Manasa?
Yes, this is Nancy. I have a question. I wondered, how do the guys get into the vaults when things need to be fixed? You know, do they just go through the manholes? Or how's that done? Or maybe someday we should meet and you could show me?
Well, so they are going to have rather large covers on them. So they would have to access them from above. Some of the vaults in the street are extremely large. The men will just climb right down in them. This one's going to be about a three-by-four-by-five-foot vault. So it is big enough to get down in if they need to. But they may be able to work on it from above, too.
Got you. But I was just curious, this is just curiosity. How do they access them, like the big ones?
They'll take the lid off on the top.
Okay.
Drop right down in them.
And drop into it.
Confined space, because it's a single entry. So they would have National Grid and RISE. And anytime any of those guys are out there working in these vaults, they'll have the equipment out there to get fresh air down in there and the evacuation equipment and all that stuff.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Manasa. Any other questions? Okay, let's move along to the consent agenda. The only thing I'd like to do is, on page two, under Matt Cooper, the language that USDA had to add in there was to include the million-dollar grant that we got on that project. So that's what triggered the amendment. It isn't going to change anything with B and L, but it was the million-dollar grant we didn't have when we first started off, okay? So if you would add that, Joanne, I'd appreciate it. Anything else on the consent agenda?
I would just like to say that I like the new way of reviewing the abstract. It's so much easier. And thank you, Joanne, for getting all that organized for us. It's just much, much easier, though. So thank you.
That's that new software. It should all be easier, I hope, once we get used to it all. But it is, the abstract is, and you don't have to do it manually. It's, you push a button and it's done. Right, Joanne?
Well, not quite, but yeah.
It's a lot easier than it used to be, when you had to manually enter everything over again.
You still have to manually enter every invoice.
Oh, yeah. But not on the abstract, right?
The abstract was always a report that had a lot of things that just didn't make sense. And this is, this just makes more sense. It's really not, in my opinion, it takes just as much time to input the invoices as the other system did. But this one is more user-friendly, and it prints out better reports and gives you more definitions and stuff.
Oh, good. Okay, so on the consent agenda, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion for one through four.
Thank you, Nancy. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carried. Okay, on the capital projects, does anyone have any questions? If not, can we have, I'm sorry. Can we have a motion for item five?
I'll make the motion for item five.
Thank you, Nancy. Can I have a second, please? Somebody else?
I'll second.
Steve, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, carried. Oh, okay, Joanne, do you want to bring us up to date on the CPR training?
I just need, I just need approval to have the employees that are on the agenda. There's seven of them from DPW and three from wastewater plant. And it's $30 an employee. And I just needed you guys to be okay with that.
I think it'd be a fantastic idea.
Yeah, it's good for two years, isn't it? CPR training?
Yeah, I think you're right, Nora. Yes, because we've done this before for them.
Right.
Yeah.
So I would, I have no problem.
I need to set it up, so I don't know anything about it. I'm just getting approval.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion to send these people off to CPR? Is it going to be virtual, or they got to go to tiers?
They're going to tiers and tubes.
No, they're not. Actually, Michelle, they're not for this part. The $30 per employee is for the first portion of the training, which now is required to be done online. Once they finish that online training, they'll get a certificate. And once we get the certificate, then we can work with Pam to schedule the employees two at a time to take the in-person portion of the training. There will be an additional cost for that. It'll end up being the same amount as it usually costs, but they can't do the in-person training for the first portion, the classroom portion now, because they can only do two people at a time.
Right.
Well, I make the motion that we accept this.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, they're off and running. Okay, we want to talk about virtual meetings. Nancy, you had a question earlier. I think it was mine as we were leaving the last meeting, when we might consider not doing this virtual anymore. We did a little research. We can do 50 people, have to wear a mask, sign in. I don't know, we want to continue this way for a while?
I would prefer to continue this way.
Michelle?
Nancy?
At first, I was all for getting us together in person. But the way that the United States is going with COVID, and we are seeing some upticks in our own community, we may want to do this through the rest of the summer. But when we do go to having it in person, we need to have a way for the public to be able to log in, because there may be people that don't want to come out in public because of COVID. So I'm okay. I'm okay for the rest of the summer.
Do you want to bring us up to date on that? I'm not sure we can have it both ways, right?
You can allow people to participate both in-person and electronically. I can't do that for you. So you would have to contract with somebody, Steve Weed or someone like that. Your building doesn't have the capability to do that. So I couldn't do that for you, because you'd be, you would have to broadcast your boardroom showing everyone. Additionally, someone else would need to be doing the transcript, because when you're broadcasting from the boardroom, everybody in the boardroom will show up as one name in the transcript. So it will add a significant amount of time to that process as well. It already takes about twice as long as the meeting to do the transcript. So you would add additional time on top of that. So regardless, you would have to have an outside person do your videoing of your meeting or the electronic portion of your meeting, or have that set up somehow.
Now, I could still call them if I chose not to come, correct?
Yes, you could do that. Either a conference phone or someone even could have you on speaker on their cellphone, as long as you can hear the people there and they can hear you, that would work. The problem is, again, the infrastructure in the building, and more specifically, the room where you have the meeting, you're just not set up with the technology. The town boardroom has the technology. They have the large screen, which has HDMI, which can hook into the computer, et cetera, et cetera.
What if we moved our meeting to the town meeting room?
You would have to talk to the town board about that. I don't know. But if it was...
I mean, that's not bad, but I mean, certainly that could be an option.
Yeah, I mean, the ability would be there then to broadcast the meeting like the town has. So, yes.
Okay. At least we know our options.
So the way it stands right now, we'll go continue like we are. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, I would say so through, and then we should revisit this again and towards the latter part of August and see how everything's standing within our community, would be my recommendation.
Is the rest of the board okay with that? Are you, Alicia, okay with it? So you could spend four hours, wise and long?
As far as I know, I mean, there may be occasions where it is an issue. But I think what I will do, if you guys are going to continue doing this forward, I may show Joanne how to start the meeting and add her as an organizer. In that case, if for some reason I have a conflicting meeting with the town or something, there will be another person who can start the meeting.
Oh, okay, that'd be great. Thank you, Alicia. Okay. I know, we've got the virtual meeting put behind us. There was one thing that came up Friday. Last April, we had requests for a four-way stop sign down on Webb Street. And we turned it over to DOT, because it is a state road. And we got a response back from their regional traffic engineer that denied it. The studies showed that the traffic volume and the crash history were reviewed, and it was determined that this location fails to satisfy any other criteria for the installation of an all-way stop control. So I'll have Joanne get a copy of this letter to the resident there. And that's what we'll have to do as long as it's a state road.
Madam Mayor, I don't know if there's anything we can do, but Merrick Street has become a race course of heavy trucks. They're just speeding down the street. And although we don't have as many kids out as we normally would in the summer, it's pretty scary sometimes.
Well, what we'll have to do is get together with Luck Brothers and ask them to slow, if it's their trucks that they're complaining about, or is it just trucks in general?
It's me complaining about it. I mean, you're quite a hostile if you're even trying to...
But are they construction trucks, or is it just trucks? Yeah, okay. We can speak to Luck Brothers and ask them to slow it down. I don't know what else we can do.
Also point out that there's a stop sign on the corner of Mary and Merrick.
Right. But this was the stop sign at Webb.
Right, but I mean, they're ignoring the stop sign at the corner of Mary and Merrick.
Okay.
So the only fix to that is to stop when you're supposed to.
Okay. Okay, is there any other issues about the stop sign? Any input? Okay. And another thing that came up over the weekend was the Bass Elite Tournament that we got the word this afternoon that it has been canceled in Maudie Town. I didn't see it on the news because I was at work. It might have been out there, I don't know. But Clayton will be hosting that. No spectators. I gave you all the information over the weekend that we had, but there will be no spectators. They're going to set up on Mary Street and the green spaces, the ABM, between the two buildings on the south side of Mary Street. They haven't been here to do the logistical stuff, so I'm not just sure who's going to be where. But there's the ESPN Communications, their staff, the weigh-in stations. So as soon as we get that, they should start to be, they're going to have to be tested. And that's been set up by the county. The county was the lead on this, Scott Gray and Bobby Cantwell. And then they brought in the village and antique boat museum and the Chamber of Commerce. So there's a few logistical things to get there. There's 84 bass boats, and they're single. There's no co-enger in this tournament. This is the elite tournament. They'll start out with 84, and then two days with 40 each. And the last day on Sunday is only 10.
Madam Mayor, do we have to get any counter approvals from the town or anything? Do the town have any say in this? I just thought of that.
Oh, no, I don't believe so. I mean, I talked to Lance about it a couple of times. And I know that... But I can't well talk to him. So, and I, you know, I had the email, and I called each of our board members.
Right. I just wasn't sure if the town had to be involved.
No, no, they don't.
In the decision-making.
Talked to Lance as well.
Okay.
So I think it would be good, just for the record, to put this out for a vote, because we just did it over the computer over the weekend. So if anybody would put that up there to approve having this Bass Elite Tournament here, no spectators, about 150 people. They've all got to be tested. There'll be a testing site here. The county did a really thorough job working with the county public help. So actually, there's been, I don't know, Nancy, that picture that you sent to me, I had seen from John Farmer. And I asked Tricia Bannister about it, because she knows all the bass people. And she reached out to the tournament that was over at French Creek over the weekend. And they had all their live fish went back up towards Cedar Point. And the other ones, I don't know who picked them up, but they normally have somebody here that wants them, and they clean them and freeze them. So I don't know.
It was definitely disgusting.
Oh, yeah, it was. But you people that are on Facebook, have you got any idea who put it out there? It would be good that they got the message of it wasn't anything that we were affiliated with. So I don't know where they came from. Because they only released the live ones, and the ones, other ones, they usually carried off, and people use them.
I guess, you know, somebody did it. And if we could stop it from happening again, that would be great.
So if anybody knows where they came from, it would be good to know. But I would like whoever put it out on Facebook to kind of clarify that.
If they know.
Okay. And I don't know if the board members saw in the paper this week, Jefferson County legislators declined the Stone Garden Grant that we have had pretty good luck with a couple of times. And so I think that we need to do a little research on it. The reason they turned it down, they didn't like the license plate reader part that was involved in that. But there was $113,000. It could have been divided up between Clayton A. Bay and Jefferson County Sheriff's Department. And it can come up to vote again in three months. So in the meantime, we'll see what we can find out to, see if we can get this. I talked to Kevin about it. He was disappointed that we didn't get it. Can be used for overtime. It can be used for equipment. Yes, and good points.
Did anyone see on News Junkie that the hotel got a PPP grant to cover expenses for employees who stayed on?
I did not see, but I don't see News Junkie a lot. Well, just about everybody got PPE money. Well, just about everybody got PPE money. A lot of people, I don't know whether they extended that or not.
The Hart Corporation got a minimum of $350,000. They got somewhere between $350,000 and a million, the corporation did. So they're not starving like they may say they are.
I didn't see that. Okay, anyone else got anything they want to bring up? If not, do we have Paul Lock? Or anybody's got any questions?
Well, first of all, we didn't...
On Union Street, that's on the agenda.
We didn't, we did not vote for the fish thing that you wanted us to do. And then there's...
Okay, put that on, put you, Nancy.
Then the DeWalt's are here, I assume.
Let's do the vote on the fish tournament.
Well, as I, I will put it up for a motion. I voted yes the other day. I hope I did the right thing. I am very concerned about our safety here within the community as I see numbers nationwide are rising and numbers, I've heard of different people in the communities, parties, getting COVID. And I'm very, and I'm very concerned, and I hope we're doing the right thing. But, so... So, because I voted yes on yesterday when I spoke to you, I will vote yes again, but I'm very concerned. So I hope we did the right thing.
Well, I think if they're tested and they... There's been bass fishermen around here now for the last month. I don't think they're the same ones or not. But, you know, they'll have to wear a mask and do things that everybody else has to do.
One of the things I'd like to clarify is that if you take a COVID test on Monday and you get exposed to COVID on Tuesday, you're going to get a negative test result on Wednesday from your Monday test, but you may still be carrying COVID. And that's what makes it so difficult, and that's why it keeps spreading. And this isn't just unique to fishermen. This is true across the board. So that's one of the tricky things about relying too much on the test. And I'm not saying that to say no to this, because I said yes, and I will stick to that. I'm saying it as an educational thing for everybody. Just because you test negative on Monday doesn't mean Wednesday you're still safe, or even Tuesday. So we should all have that in our head somewhere as we go through the week.
You know, any one of us could get tested and...
Yes, that's my point.
There'll be more of us out there than we know.
Yes, that's my point, so...
Yes, and I, I agree. And that's why it concerns me, considering I have 90-year-old parents living in the village now, and I have people coming into my office every day. I understand, any of us can get it. It just, it concerns me, that's all.
Okay, can we have a motion to put that up to approve?
Nancy did.
Nancy did, who seconded?
I'll second.
I'll second it.
My turn, Steve.
Okay.
Okay. On favor? Yeah, we'll make sure when they have their meeting with the county that we have our concerns shared with them and make it the best we can and the safest we can. Okay, now, who do we have out there that would like to speak? Isn't anyone out there that wants to speak from the public?
Yeah, this is the DeWalt's. We sent in pictures this morning that are pretty self-explanatory of what's going on in Union Street. And we've been advised not to follow up at this time. So just pay attention to those pictures, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, because the next step in this whole deal is the ZBA meeting on the 20th, correct?
That's correct, but that's only dealing with part of the problem.
Right, but that's... They got to take it in the sections that it shows up. So if we can get that behind it, that'll be a step in the right direction.
Now, my understanding is that, and I've been trying to figure it out in the code book, but when something happens on the street versus on the property or in the river versus on the property, that that's the police department or the DPW who have to enforce that? And then Richard enforces anything with real estate, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, it is, that is correct.
Thank you. So then, when you see something like that...
Kevin's been down there a couple of times on the street deal. Okay, anyone else? If not, yeah?
No, I have a question in reference to this. So then, who, who is responsible for this? And I apologize for saying the word incorrectly, the riparian rights. Is that, is that police? Is that DEC? Is that Village Board?
That would be the Village Board.
The decisions.
Say, say that again, please?
The Village Board are the trustees for the assets of the community, and the streets and the riparian rights are the village's assets.
So we need to get this ZBA thing behind us. Then we'll take the next batch of issues that are coming up. And then, I don't know if they've got their plan into the planning board or not for where they want to go next. But they've got to make some headway on that ZBA thing. And I think there's going to be a live meeting. I don't think they're going to do it on Zoom. I'm not sure. But it is on the 20th.
Right now, it's a live meeting, but the governor may have overridden that. To be determined.
It says on the New York State that open meetings cannot be had until August 5th. That, I know, I saw the same thing. And then I saw something else today that that was a mistake on that website. So I can for, I have it on my phone, or I can forward it on to people, that it does look like you can, that you can have the open meetings.
Right, up to 50, with sign in and mask and everything. But that's a pretty small room that they're going to have it in. I don't know how you can meet 50 people in there.
50% of your maximum capacity is the max you can have. So if it's downstairs in like that planning board, they can have probably four people.
No, they're planning on having it in the boardroom, last I heard.
Oh, that would be good, because I think there's going to be an awful lot of people there.
I'm sorry, Susie.
She said she thinks there's a lot of people going.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot of people there supporting the DeWalt.
Right, I don't see how they... I asked if they wouldn't have it in the Opera House, and they have before now. And if they anticipate that there's going to be a lot of people there, how they are going to make it work in that boardroom?
I guess it depends on the mood. Just depends on the mood. As long as it's legally advertised correctly, there shouldn't be any problem having it in the Opera House.
I have a question. Who is Richard's liaison to the board?
To our board? Richard doesn't, Richard should be here.
Right, but I mean, who's his liaison? Because like, the police have one, DPW, the water department, everybody...
We don't have one. We haven't ever done that.
Well, I think it, I think it would be a good idea that we did. Because according to our code book, since the weather's been so hot, I've had the, I've read through the code book quite a bit. And it says in there, and I'm not throwing Richard under the bus, it says that he's supposed to show up at our meetings. And I understand he's busy, and he goes to zoning meetings and planning boards and things of that nature. But if we had someone from our board liaising on, liaison with him, then more of that zoning information would be available to the village.
Does somebody want to volunteer?
I'll be happy to. No, I'll be happy to.
Is that Nancy?
Yes.
Okay.
I have, I've created, I have a good relationship with Richard, so I feel comfortable with that. So if it's okay with you, I would be happy to do that.
Sure, that's great.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Norma, can you hear me? This is Pam McDowell talking.
Yeah.
Did you have a vote about the fishermen the other day? Like, was there a meeting or something?
There wasn't a meeting. The tournament chairperson reached out to the chamber, and then the chamber reached out. Then the county got involved right away. And I'm not sure if it was through the chamber that happened or not. I got the phone call from the chamber. That, and then the county ran with it and did all the testing information. And the chamber came over to the boat museum, because it would be needed more space than what we could have on Mary Street. And to get the boat museum in on it and see if they could get their board to approve it, and they did. So it was sort of an email, phone, and Tricia and Chris Bogansh did stop over at the boat museum late Friday afternoon.
But your trustees said they already voted.
I'm sorry?
Prior.
I didn't know anything about it until Tuesday, or Friday.
But Nancy and Michelle both said they voted on it already before tonight.
Yeah, they did. We did, we sent a lot of emails, and I followed up with a phone call to every board member.
Oh, so you can have votes by mail, by email, I didn't realize that.
That's why we wanted to have something decided on, so we could have a formal vote on it tonight. Because they needed to move forward on this. There wasn't a lot of time. Everything was done on the phone and email over the weekend to get us to this point. Anything else, Pam?
No, I'm just concerned having 150 strangers, you know, right on my side street.
I guess... Are we going to provide security? How are we going to keep all these people from wandering the village?
I don't think we can stop them from, you can't stop anybody from going downtown. I mean, the streets are full of people, you don't know who they are.
I know, that's why I said...
We can put up the penalty that we have to keep people from getting into the area to congregate, because there's no spectators. But I don't think, once they get in their car or vehicle and leave here... But they don't ever go anyplace. They fish and they grab a sandwich at a quick stop and sleep. But as far as, you know, tell them they can't go someplace, I don't know that we can do that.
Okay. I thought maybe we could.
How can you stop, I mean, this, just like up here at the corner, every day, every license place that comes through is from someplace else. Actually, we're probably better off with these people, because we know that they've at least been tested once and... I don't know. It's a pretty scary deal, and it's wearing really thin on everybody. We're not out of the woods. So has anybody else got anything?
I, this is Nancy. I have two, two things I'd like to discuss. The library is not open, but they are open for curbside service. So if you, if you're looking for a particular book, you can call them, and they will make arrangements with you to take the book outside to you. And Brooke says it's going fairly well. She's, they have a safety committee. So it's going to be up to the safety committee and the board as to when they actually open. I would anticipate they'll be opening within the next six weeks is most likely what's going to happen. So things are going well there. The other discussion I wanted to have was about our fund balance policy. Because one of our constituents is asked about that. And then Joanne's reply was, it was discussed or tabled in 2017. And I pulled out the agenda, and she's correct. I wasn't doubting you, Joanne. And after reading the article in Sac, in the paper last week about Sacats Harbor, one of the things they were nailed on was a fund balance policy. So I think we should get that accomplished this year. And I don't, I don't know about it, how it's done, but I believe it needs to be done.
I think that one came from EFPR. I think that Tina helped get that information together. It was just before Geneva left, that we started...
That is correct, and right before Christmas. And I have no, I can't remember why we tabled it, but we need to bring it back to the table and get this corrected. So however that's done, that needs to be done.
We'll get it from other people, see what they've got.
Norma, that's what, we actually sent a copy to Tina last week to take a look at as a draft. So I think that she's looking at that. Hopefully, information would come to the board soon.
Oh, okay, that's good news, good news. Anything else, anyone? If not, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you, Nancy. Second?
Michelle.
Michelle, on favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Night.
Okay, yep. See you later.